Our open hearing and the council meeting, we can discuss that further if we want to. So, Mr. Goddard, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I don't get an opportunity to address Republic City Council very often, so when I do get to come down here, it is a treat to see one. We are looking at opioid abuse as a bigger picture problem, and I'm going to be talking to you about a tool that can be used to help combat opioid abuse tonight. And this is a presentation, a joint presentation, the Springfield-Green County Health Department and the Healthy Living Alliance, who serves as our county-wide advisory group. And at that table, we have members of, like Harold Bench, our Green County Commissioner from the Western District, we have Cliff Smart with Missouri State University, Steve Edwards with Cox Health, and a number of anchor institutions represented at that table. And they have made opioids and drug abuse one of the cornerstones of our Community Health Improvement Plan for Green County, and they have made Prescription Drug Monitoring Program a key element of that program. So Brenda, if you could move on to the next slide, please. If you hang around public health people, which I'm looking around the table, some of you probably don't have to deal with public health people very often, but we're very fond of acronyms and very fond of models. And so I had to have PDMP, which is our acronym, and I had to have a model. But this is a model that was created by the Association of State and Territorial Health Officers, and it really represents public health practice paradigms as they are associated with substance abuse and addictions. And you get to the top of that pyramid, and you're dealing with strategies that are closest to the addictive, to the person who is suffering the burden of addiction. As you move down to the bottom of the pyramid, those are first-degree interventions, and that's really where we in public health spend most of our time, because those are way upstream, and you hope that if you implement those types of approaches, you can stop addiction before it begins. So prescription drug monitoring programs are a first-degree intervention in that model. Go ahead to the next slide. We are seeing an increase in death rates due to opioids, and some of you may or may not be familiar with what opioid drugs are, but they are drugs that are used to reduce pain. So if you go to the dentist for an extraction or a root canal, you may go home with a prescription for an opioid drug. Some common names for those medications are morphine, methadone, hydrocodone, oxycodone, and heroin is also an opioid that's illegal. And these drugs are often sold under brand names, including Oxycontin, Percocet, Vicodin, Perkadin, Tyloxin, Demerol, among others. We're in the middle of opioid epidemic. If you read the paper, listen to the radio, you'll hear some conversation about this. Overdose is the leading cause of injury-related deaths in the United States, and more than 50,000 Americans died from drug overdoses last year. That's the most ever. Heroin deaths rose 23% in one year to 12,989. That's slightly higher than the number of gun homicides, according to government data. And death from synthetic opioids, including illegal fentanyl, rose 73% to 9,580. Finally, prescription drug painkillers took the highest toll but posted the smallest increase. Abuse of drugs like Oxycontin and Vicodin killed 17,536 Americans. That's an increase of 4%. So I'm going to present to you tonight an Sbar analysis. This is just a tool that we like to use to kind of standardize how we present policy approaches. So it goes through situation, background, assessment, and recommendation. So the situation, in Missouri, we are the only state that includes the District of Columbia in the United States without a state-run prescription drug monitoring program. And what happened was the St. Louis County Health Department saw an increase in their opioid-related deaths. Their coroner was working very closely with them. They mapped them all out for the entire county of St. Louis. They didn't see a pattern. And a lot of times with drug deaths, you'll see patterns related to socioeconomic class or other demographics. In this case, it was widespread, and they could not come up with an explanation for why it was widespread. So they started looking at what kind of tools can we use in government to help stop this opioid epidemic? And one of the things they came up with was the prescription drug monitoring program. Now, those are expensive and complicated to enact. And as you are probably aware, the Missouri House and Senate have been working on this several years and have not been able to get one passed in Jefferson City. So they explored the opportunity, could we do this on our own? And I think they were originally interested in the St. Louis metropolitan area. Very quickly, you started to see some interest, not only from Metropolitan St. Louis, but from other major population centers in the state. And they explored whether the Department of Justice would be interested in providing some funding for that. And DOJ is interested, and they allowed for them to apply for a grant. It'd be the first time that a local government has applied for a grant to do a PDMP. It's usually a state that applies for those grant funds. So they passed a local ordinance, and let's go on to the next slide. They passed a local ordinance in March of 2016, and they just recently went live. And I kind of got lost in my thoughts, so give me a second to get caught back up. I'm going to explain to you how PDMPs work, because there are some misconceptions about PDMPs. A PDMP is very simply, when your doctor prescribes to you a Schedule II, III, or IV drug, so Schedule II are the most addictive drugs that you can get. So if you get pure morphine, for example, that falls into Schedule II. Schedule III is less addictive. Schedule IV would be one that probably not have the forming. Using a PDMP, any time that you filled that prescription at a pharmacy that had a prescription drug monitoring program, that pharmacy would be required then by law to upload that you filled that prescription into a database. That database could be utilized by your physician or your dentist to evaluate your prescription habits, if you will, or your prescription history. So it's not available to me as a public health practitioner. It would be available only to people who met the qualifications to be on that system. So if you went back to your doctor in a couple of weeks, and there's nothing weird on your prescription history, they're going to use that as a medical management tool to know that you're doing the right things. Now, if you are addicted to, you know, Oxycontin, and you're trying to game the system, and you've been to five different doctors in five different counties, and you fill in five different pharmacies, that's going to be a red flag for your physician or your dentist to say that we have a patient here who has bigger medical challenges than I'm aware of. They're obviously doctor shopping, and they're probably addicted to medication. And so then that prescriber could use that information to work with the client to try to get them away from the addictive behavior. So that's essentially how the PDMP works. Now, other entities can have access. Law enforcement, I talked to your police chief, can have access, but that's based on subpoena, so they would have to go to a court, get a subpoena, submit that to the St. Louis County Health Department, and then they could get prescription activity for someone that they thought might be breaking the law. Additionally, regulatory boards, such as the Howing Arts Boards and the Pharmacy Board, could get information to track the prescribing habits of a doctor who was maybe giving out too many of these medications. So here's where we sit currently, and if you could go on to the next slide. We know that PDMPs are a medical management tool that could be included in a comprehensive strategy to address the opioid epidemic. The state of Missouri has yet again failed to pass a legislation that would lead to a state-run PDMP. And so we have, you know, support from the community in Springfield and from Green County to move forward with a prescription drug monitoring program. Go on to the next map here. This map shows you the counties that have enacted legislation. The first wave, which is, is that in green? I think it is green, were enacted on 3/7 of 2017. The second wave, which is in the blue color, went live on 4/25, and the last group went live on June 1st. So what you see right there basically is 58% of Missouri's population are now covered by ordinances that have a prescription drug monitoring program. The city of Springfield has their first reading on July 10th. The county, and so their ordinance would, if they passed it, would go into effect on July 24th. I talked to Harold, and I don't think that he minds that I mentioned that the county plans on having their public hearing roughly around the same time as July 24th. And based on the way that we're structured in Green County, Springfield's a charter city, Republic's a charter city, and then Green County has the rest of the county. So this would be something that you would need to decide whether this is the right approach for you. You have five pharmacies in the city of Republic that would be impacted by a code change here. All five pharmacies have been sent information on the PDMP. We did have a public education setting or meeting for those pharmacists. I don't believe that we had any from the public attend, but I think that PDMP is something that most pharmacists are familiar with, because it's so widespread throughout the country. So let's move on to the next slide. Passage of an ordinance that creates a PDMP, we think is a good strategy, but you hear criticism that they haven't been successful or effective. That criticism is well-taken, but I think you have to keep it in perspective. We're in the middle of an epidemic in this country. You saw a widespread prescription or prescribing of these types of medicines in the late '90s or the 2000s, and pharmaceutical companies weren't clear that these were as addictive as they are. They lead to heroin addiction in a lot of cases, because addicts who can't get the pain meds or who no longer get as good a high off of them might turn to heroin. And we know the dangers of heroin, and you're seeing significant public health problems in the Cincinnati, Ohio region, for example, New Hampshire, where they have 20 overdoses in a day a lot of times that some of these hospitals are dealing with. We're starting to see some of those things transpire in Green County as well. So go to the final slide. PDMP won't be the answer to the entire problem that we're experiencing related to the opioid epidemic, but it is definitely a tool that can be used to help physicians monitor current patients that may have an addiction to these pain meds. And the greater hope is that we can stop addictions before they happen using these kinds of tools, because it is a medical management tool. We are going to have to come up with other approaches. We're going to need to work with law enforcement, so they totally understand the dangers of fentanyl and carfentanil, which are, carfentanil's a rhino tranquilizer that's getting cut into the heroin supply. So imagine why someone would want to take a large animal tranquilizer, but, you know, some addicts really do seek the more powerful drugs. We're going to need to work with our hospitals to come up with better treatment capacity in this region, because we don't have enough treatment beds. And we're going to have to come up with good, sound public policy, some of which I don't have answers for yet. But the interesting thing about southwest Missouri, and I bet a lot of you have lived here for a long time, things arrive here last, don't they? I mean, if you're waiting for food trucks, food trucks don't come for five years, and then you're glad when they get here. One of the good things about living in the center of the country is this opioid epidemic is late-arriving here compared to some other communities. So we've got a little bit of time to work on some strategies, and this could be the first step, and one that I think would be a good move. But ultimately, that's your decision, and we're simply here to make recommendations and to guide you and answer any questions that you might have. So that's all of the formal comments that I have. I'm sure that you have a lot of questions.
Counsel, questions, yourself.
So we're the only state that does not have a state-run PDMP or whatever?
Yeah, we're 51st.
Okay. So how do we rank two other states as far as this issue?
About the middle of the pack, and, you know, I don't think that that's due to lack of a PDMP, or it could be explained way by lack or the presence of a PDMP. I think that what you're dealing with is we are in the center of the nation. And if you go look at your big metropolitan areas like Kansas City and St. Louis, you'll see a much more marked problem in those bigger communities.
Gotcha. How has this been received by pharmacies in other counties? What are their takes, their take on this?
Then little to no controversy in the counties that have enacted this. It's really largely an invisible process for them. And in Green County, we're not going to have them carry the mail as far as paying subscriber fee. Subscriber fee for the entire county of Green is a little south of $17,000. That's something that I'm going to take out of my core budget as a public health department, because we think it's that important. So pharmacies on the back end, this is something that their vendors can do, and it gets reported up, so it's really from a business practice perspective, not very cumbersome for your pharmacies.
Just for clarification, the PDMP is, is it designed almost exclusively to mitigate the doctor shopping problem?
Medical management tool and using further information for your healthcare provider to evaluate you as a patient.
Okay. But its design is, is it wholly or at least mostly around that problem, doctor shopping?
I would say that that's probably the bigger part of the focus, yes.
Okay. So what do you say to the argument that less than 3% of the opioid deaths come from, or misuse, not deaths, come from that particular issue?
You know, I think that you can counter that with that PDMPs have been successful in Florida, for example, helping physicians make better decisions about prescribing practices. But the PDMP is not going to be the sole answer on its own. It's not going to stop doctor shopping entirely. So certainly, people are sometimes selling the drugs illicitly or sharing them illicitly. So I don't think that the PDMP will be the full answer to the problem. I don't think I answered your question, but hold on, just a second.
Well, no, I think, I think you did.
Okay.
I, I'm a data guy.
Sure.
And the data doesn't tell me PDMPs work. And I understand, you know, epidemic versus, you know, or peak times versus where we've been. You know, the fact that we're the only one without doesn't exactly speak as a negative to me either.
Sure.
But for me, if I had pointed things to look at, okay, in this state, and in this county, and in this city, a PDMP was in place, and the deaths due to opioid misuse went from this number per 100,000 people to this number, I don't see that. I haven't seen that anywhere.
There's a report from Brandeis University. If you just Google "Brandeis University PDMP," and I could send a link that provides fairly good evidence that I think will counter a lot of Dr. Lilly's arguments.
I'd like to see that.
And in every state, they are structured a little differently, too. So you've got to think, that's one of the negatives of a federalist system, you know, states experiment a little bit. So all of your PDMPs are going to be a little different. They're a little more cumbersome sometimes for physicians to utilize. So I'm not confident that every one of the PDMPs nationwide is constructed in an optimal manner. I'm pretty confident that in Green County, we can make this work very well, because we have two health systems that are very invested in this process, as well as Jordan Valley Community Health Center. And Missouri Pharmacy Board, by the way, is also in favor of this, and I've yet to meet a pharmacist who's opposed to it.
Mr. Wilson.
Do you have anything new to refute Dr. Lilly's white paper?
Well, I suppose that the data is what it is. It's data. You know, the brand-
Do you think it's true?
Oh, I don't think that it's a lie. Dr. Lilly and I respect each other, and this is an issue that we choose to disagree on. Once again, PDMP is not going to be the answer to the entire problem. It's simply a tool in a bigger toolkit that has to be collaborative in nature.
Well, according to this, we're 22nd in prescription drug overdose days, deaths, by state in 15, and then there's, what, 26 that are higher, and they have this. Is that explainable?
I think that you're seeing the effects of an epidemic, and we are not suffering the greater burden of that yet, is my take on this.
What other, is this a single-pronged approach, or what other things do you have in place similar to this to help with the epidemic?
Well, we're in the process of trying to draft those strategies now, but certainly, treatment capacity is going to be a big piece, because you have to find a way to deal with the addicts that you currently have. You know, we don't have enough treatment beds. We don't have enough capacity in this community to deal with the burden of addiction, and so that's going to be a big piece of this as well.
Mr. Ed.
So the only the doctors report to this, or does the pharmacy report also?
It's only the pharmacies that report.
Okay.
So they're-
Is there a way to implement where the doctors and the pharmacies? Because two eyes, or, you know, two sets of eyes are always better than one.
The reason that the pharmacies are the reporter is because it's only for prescriptions that have been filled, not for prescriptions that have also been written. So it will only be the prescriptions that are filled by a patient that roll up into the database. And then your physicians and your prescribers, such as your dentist, are not mandated to monitor the system, but Cox and Mercy are going to highly encourage their physicians to be a participant.
Okay, but it's not going to be a mandated thing for the doctors and the pharmacies?
It's mandated only for the pharmacies.
Only for the pharmacies.
Correct.
Mr. Wilson.
One more question.
Sure.
Lost my train of thought. That's not good. Okay. This here, if Missouri goes into this, it'll be all 50 states. And if they do that, and it's a national database, the government has access, isn't that kind of infringing?
You know, I could argue that those databases already exist.
Medicare.
Yeah, but I don't really view it as a constitutional issue, because the same HIPAA privacy rules that are in place right now are applicable here. So I'm not going to have access to it. Harold Bench isn't going to have access to it. It's going to be your physicians-
But the government has access to it. But the government will have access to it.
I don't think that the feds would have necessarily access to it, so it's going to be your prescribers who have the ultimate access to it.
That's why it keeps that one employee from copying the database and turning it over to somebody.
Well, that certainly was a danger.
That's happened in the past.
Yeah.
I think what Mr. Wilson's trying to say is Medicare, Medicaid, those are voluntary. This is mandatory, which, to me, is what makes it unconstitutional.
Sure.
And I have one question that kind of spins off from that when we're talking about access. You said, I have two questions.
Sure.
The first one, let me go to the enforcement side of it. It's required by law, an ordinance is passed, no doubt, but who's enforcing that to ensure that it's being done?
It would have to be your local law enforcement in this case, because there would be no, you know, regulatory body to enforce it. That's one of the bad approaches of using this piecemeal, you know, county-by-county approach.
But in order to do that, you would have to write a subpoena to St. Louis County Health Department, is that correct?
No, we, you would want to write that, you know, using your local law enforcement and going through your municipal court.
Okay.
And it probably expecting that it would get, you know, taken out to certain court eventually would be my guess, yes.
So, but that would be an ongoing, and that's just a subpoena for an individual. So I mean, as far as-
I'm sorry, I may, maybe I've misunderstood.
Okay, well, what I'm saying, so if, let's say that this was an ordinance in Republic, and Walgreens, let's say we understood that they weren't following the ordinance.
So that's a separate issue from the subpoenas I mentioned earlier. In this case, Walgreens would be not participating in violation of your city ordinance. So in that case, that would be a local, you know, ticket written to the pharmacist in charge of Walgreens. You'd have to go through municipal court process.
But I guess, how do you figure that out in the first place if there's no monitoring of the system?
Well, we get reports that are in aggregate that would tell us who's participating, who's not, and we would work with your city police chief to work through the reporting processes.
Okay. So that, the next question spins off on access for me, and this goes to privacy. You said there would be people who were qualification, there would be qualifications to be on the system, and I guess my question would be, who decides what those qualifications are, and who's approving people that go onto this system?
Yeah, they are laid out, I believe, in that FAQ that I sent, that I distributed. So on page four of the FAQ, it shows the access and the type of access. And basically, that is validated through St. Louis County Health Department, who will be running this until they're able to turn over a database to a statewide approach, which I think will probably happen within the next several years. And so for a dispenser, they have a process in place where you go online, you sign up as a dispenser, you give them your DEA certificate number, and they validate that with the proper authorities to make sure that you have a right to access the system. Same with a medical prescriber. So if your doctor wanted to participate, your doctor would have to go online, apply, and provide their current medical license to be able to participate in the system. And then that is cross-validated with the state to make sure that that licensure is valid and current. Your physician could also give a designate or a designate. So oftentimes, if you go to the doctor, you see the nurse first. The nurse would probably be the individual that would be checking under the doctor's orders.
Okay. And so the custodian of records for this system, is it a state agency or governmental agency?
Yes, St. Louis County Health Department, until we end up with a statewide system.
Okay, thank you.
So it is a bit cumbersome in that regard, and that's unfortunate. But this is the first time that we've ever had to try to cobble one together like this.
Any other questions from council?
I just have one on page four.
Sorry, Greg.
No, go ahead, Greg.
This isn't really a question for him. It's more so for everyone else on council. Dealing with people that, I've dealt with patients who have been doctor shopping to get their drugs, and they don't just stop there. They slowly move on down to heroin. Once they move to heroin, they go to fentanyl. And then eventually, they'll pick up some laced heroin that has some carfentanil in it, once it gets to this area, and they're dead. So my personal feeling on it is, if it invades everybody's privacy a little bit, that's just too darn bad. I'm tired of people dying. We got to do everything we can to stop. And coming from the person that has to be there to work those people is pretty upsetting to me that we can't do it. If we only get 3% of those people, at least have 3% that's not going to die. Not to mention the little kids that are in the house that pick up the prescriptions and take them mistakenly. That's becoming a bigger problem also, is kids dying of overdoses accidentally. Whether mom and dad leave their heroin needle laying out, little Johnny puts it in himself and overdoses. So I feel pretty strongly for this. Whatever we can do to make it easier for law enforcement, fire an EMS, healthcare providers to do their job, and try to keep this stuff out of reach. to do their job, and try to keep this stuff out of reach of people that are going to abuse it, and that's what we need to do. So that's my two cents on it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Mendez, did you have?
Yeah, just one more question. The only one that mentions de-identified data is local public health agency. When you look down here at Board of Pharmacy, state regulatory boards, do they have access to the same patient data as the prescriber and the dispenser?
They receive ad hoc reports, which would be more aggregate in nature, so they would be minus the personal health information. Now, if they're investigating a specific prescriber or a pharmacy in a fraud case, then they could make a request that would have information specific to that investigation.
Okay.
Mr. Scherzer.
I'll agree with you, Greg, completely on, on your thoughts. I'm not sure where the magic number is, if we would adapt this program. And it would say, for example, in Greene County, one life, is it worth it? Is 10 lives in Greene County, is it worth it? Just where do we draw the line? And dealing with kids daily, it's coming. I can tell you it's coming. We've lost kids already to this. Last week, we lost, a friend that I had, lost his son to the same type thing, to prescription drugs, overdose, and he died. So while, like you said, it may be a little bit invasion of privacy, but when you talk to a parent that's lost a child, I'm not sure that invasion of privacy is going to really matter to them very much. So I agree with you, Greg, 100%.
I'll add, too, there's the carfentanil, some bad stuff, and it's heading this way. They've got cases of it in St. Louis. We're watching it move down the interstate towards us. And that stuff, a dusting of it, can kill you, and there's not anything anybody can do about it. It's killed cops, it's killed first responders, EMS, firefighters, just from breathing it in on an overdose call. So now, now the people that are having to deal with it are getting killed, too. So we've got kids involved, we got innocent people that just want to do their job and help everybody out that are getting killed because of heroin, and it starts with prescriptions.
Anything else from counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'll just add that I can't really speak to the PDMP side of it, but I will tell you from a administrative function, talking to other leaders, it's not just going to be necessarily this program. I can't really speak for Greg or Mr. Burris out of the city of Springfield, but I do know the medical community in and of itself. This is something that has got all of our attention at the last mayor, or the mayor's association meeting. This was brought up by Sheriff Arnott that the heroin issue is getting bigger and bigger. So whether this is something we do or don't do, as a region, we're going to have to start getting collectively come together, whatever that is, that collaboration key. I don't know if it's this tool, but I do know that it, from administrators, we're trying to figure out, how do we police and help our local communities to fight it, and what do we need to do? I don't know if it's committees or more things to bring more awareness, to draw it, draw it more to the forefront. If we don't get more ahead of it collectively, and I do appreciate what, what Mr. Burris is doing with the medical community, I don't want to speak on his behalf, but I do know that he is working on a group and trying to get more of that with the hospitals because the hospitals are seeing it more and more. And so we do, as a, as a region, need to work on a, on a program to address it because it is coming, and if you haven't dealt with it from a city perspective, it's, it's hard to deal with. But I don't know the, the tools that get you there, but I do know that there's a lot of collaboration going on already, but it's going to take a whole lot of people on that board to make it happen. But-
And we are talking to the medical community. I mean, they're going to have to look at their prescribing practices, quite frankly. So that's going to be another piece of this, finding better ways to prescribe these medicines so that they're not a long-term pain relief solution. But you're right, it is going to take, it's going to be a long haul, and you will be expecting, or you should be expecting, an invitation probably by the end of the week to an opioid summit that the state will host in Springfield. It'll be the first in nine regional meetings, so we'll make sure that you get plenty of invitations for your staff, for your professional staff and your counsel here.
So does the doctor notify the pharmacy if, let's say it's a chronic illness or if it's cancer? And if, if they, do they, do they notify them because it would, it would be a continuous? And what's the limit?
There's a, there's a lot of conversations that already take place informally with even without a PDMP. The pharmacists that I've talked to frequently call a doctor's office to find out if there's issues that are going on that require that much of the morphine equivalent. So these things already happen in an ad hoc, informal way, but, you know, a lot of people that, that go on significant amounts of morphine, I know my father in his last months, that was through hospice. So hospice wouldn't have to report through this. This is only for your retail pharmacies.
Okay, so, but even like people who've had chronic back pain, and they, I don't even know what that oxy, oxytocin or whatever it is, and they were receiving that continuously, would they show up on this database? Would they not because there was communication?
They wouldn't trigger any of the automatic alerts, which are focused on really that doctor shop, shopping pattern, where you're going to multiple pharmacies, you're paying cash, you're going to see multiple prescribers.
And so that the pharmacy would say, sorry, you can't have this?
And that, and right now, we already have pharmacists that will, if they suspect doctor shopping, a lot of them will refuse to fill.
Okay.
And they could use this also as a tool, by the way. Pharmacists are not prohibited from using the tool.
Okay.
Just one observation. This might or might not help the drug overdose, but when it comes to kids, it's the parent's medicine that they're getting into or a relative, and I can't see that this would help that. It's going to have to be done by the parents or the relatives to make sure their medicine is locked up where they can't get to it.
And that's certainly an educational component that we need to build into messaging because that is very true.
Anything else? Mr. Smith?
My only other thing would be for the police chief, Chief Lawton, do you, would you be able to have somebody to enforce this? Would this be a burden on, on, would this be a burden on your department?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not confident the program is a law enforcement program, so it tended to be that. I think it's for the medical community to kind of enforce and, and watch over their own situation. So he mentioned the, Clay mentioned the law enforcement component. I, to be honest with you, I just don't see much involvement of law enforcement unless somebody came to us and said, we have a prescriber, or we have a pharmacist who's not complying with the law or whatever. We would certainly be able to enforce any local ordinances related to that if, if somebody came forward with it. It would not overburden us in terms of investigation or anything like that. But I don't look at it as a law enforcement program.
I just knew you were aware of it. I just want to make sure that it wasn't going to be something that we're going to have to like devote somebody to or anything like that that may be a burden on you.
I don't see the volume-
Okay.
-of what we're talking about at that end for violations. You're talking about five providers, five pharmacists in Republic. I just don't see, if, if an ordinance was created, I see compliance on the part for the most part.
Okay.
And I've visited with most of the entities that are here, and Lynn Morris is on board with Family Pharmacy, Walmart, this is their corporate approach, so they, and Walgreens wouldn't be opposed. I've heard nothing in opposition from Price Cutter. I'm not familiar with Heinz Street Pharmacy, so I don't know where they sit on this issue. But the, four of the five entities are not in opposition, and I would not expect that they would be in violation of an ordinance if you passed it.
Anything else? Nothing? All right, well, sir, thank you. We're going to adjourn the work session, and we will come back together at 6:30 for the regular session.